All right, everyone. Good morning. Call this meeting to order. We have a record of attendance. We have everybody here today. Move on to, is there any additions or deletions? The agenda is circulated. If none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda is circulated.
I'll make that one.
Moved by Consulor Daniel Allen. Do I have a second? Seconded by Consulor Lauren Cushing. Motion on the floor to approve the agenda is circulated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? All right, everyone. We're also going to move into a, at the conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting, we're going to go into a special council meeting for a couple items that we discussed in camera. Is everyone agreement to that?
We're getting a motion to waive the 72 hours.
Yeah, when we're finished the committee of the whole, I'm going to call a regular council meeting and then we're going to need a motion to waive the 72 hours. All right, is there any declarations of conflict interest in any of these items? If there's any during that time, please notify me and we'll record that in the minutes. All right, item number six, presentations. We have from the town of Yarmouth, Mark Brophy, in regards to the ferry terminal. Mark, you have the floor. I see the microphones on, so you can sit down in the seat and when you're ready, you have the floor.
Soon the mask can come off?
Yes, the mask can come off.
And is this recorded?
Yes, it is.
There's nothing confidential in this, so it's no problem.
Yep.
What was it?
I believe Mike will be following along with you in regards to the, because you gave us a presentation correct.
I, does, Mark, there's a clicker right there.
Oh, I have that?
Yep.
Oh, you have that, so as you speak, you can just click ahead and back.
There we go.
All right.
It's our nice, our nice new sign. Okay. So, the project would have been announced the summer of two, 2019, before I started work with the town. The initial scope was a $9 million project, three-way split on funding, and eight work items there, the pontoon, work on the pontoon and the bridge, yard lights, pill booths, ticket booths, some building upgrades, some demolition, and some yard work. Quite a task for $9 million. So, oh, go back. It may take a second to come up, but there will, the, when I started in August part-time, the Class D estimate was $15 million, not including the terminal building upgrades. So, that's not going to work on a $9 million budget. And Class D typically is plus or minus 25%, and it's never under, it's always over. So, we were knocking on over $20 million on a $9 million project. So, with, we really didn't expect there to be any other opportunities for funding, so we had to do, come up with a strategy. What we decided on, we were going to do some site investigations, combination of divers, concrete tests, whatnot, on the wharf and pontoon. We want to protect the asset, the billing envelope, so we, of the terminal building. CBSA's first priority was new inspection booths, as you drive your car off the ferry. Some demolitions on site, to pass through Gangway, to Stevedore Building, and some yard improvements. And we were going to do a concept plan for a future ferry terminal upgrade to meet CBSA standards, security, and operation requirements. So, after a lot of hard work, we're down to a $9 million project again. So, we had a number of different scopes and work packages, and they're summarized there. The, we started with a demolition and roof replacement. Then we went to billing envelope, then foundations, site services. We did find out we had to put the foundations on piles, which added some cost. We have a new Stevedore Building for Bay Ferries, the pill booth supply, and then, once they arrive on site, install the booths and new canopies. We did the marine investigations. We've done, we did a very extensive terminal building concept design with CBSA and, of course, our consultant. We did save the project management costs with the CBCL because we did that in-house as opposed to having a private, private project manager. So, work package number one, Crane Construction was the successful contractor. We took away the Gangway, took away the Stevedore Building, we put new roof, as there was water infiltration in the lobby and other areas. Package two, uh-oh. Getting reaction, okay.
Sorry, Mark, we just have somebody in the gallery without a chair and it's kind of, sorry.
That was something I did. Work package number two, RCS Construction from Dartmouth, the billing envelope, so we do windows, doors, entrances. That's, package number three was quite extensive underground, water, electrical, power, new hydrants, new bases for yard lights, very extensive ducting for communications power, and the foundations for the canopies and the Stevedore Building. That was also RCS Construction, as this one was. Work package number four, which is the Stevedore Building for Bay Ferries. Work package number five, I just had to guess, get a picture of a booth, that's not them. They're, they're, it's been awarded, but they're not, they're not, haven't started manufacturer. They look more aluminum than the brick, but that's, that's the primary inspection booth CBSA uses when you, when you drive off the ferry. Work package number six is three new canopies. Again, that's just a typical canopy. Work package number seven, there's a whole lot of things to have to bring this, the project together. We have to install the booths, there'll be electrical and comms connections to the booths, the yard lighting, signage, and some demo, some further demolitions. So, status, work package number one is complete, two is complete, three is complete. Four, Bay Ferry is scheduled to move in next week. Five, the booth manufacturer, all the shop drawings are approved, they're moving to manufacture stage, they're just collecting the materials. That's an Ontario company, and the planned delivery is in May. Package number six, the canopies. Victoria, do you happen to have a, have an email I sent to you that you could put up after the presentation? Would you happen to have a, an email that you could put up after? I sent you an email there. The canopy's going up live right now. I sent you a beautiful picture of two cranes holding on to one, which we could, we could show afterwards. So, the canopies are going up today. There's still some finishes to do. And work package number seven, there's a lot of, there's some work in the design phase. We're still scheduled to finish all, all the summer. So, work that will not be completed after the $9 million. So, this, we've, this is, this is the existing terminal building. Right side is the second story, the left side, if you can visualize where the entrance is midway, the north part of that is all extra, an additional piece, and the rest of it is completely repurposed for flows, adjacencies, just to new CBSA standards. Class D estimate, 11.6 million, that would have to be done while they're in operation. That increases phasing costs, you have to do the bump oats, and then you have to work around schedules, that's tangly, and I mentioned earlier, when you have a Class D estimate, it's never under. So, that's, that was more than my original budget to start with. The, so that's, that's a view of the yard. The marine structure on the left side, that's the condition of the existing wharf, that's a typical picture. CBSL estimates $8 million project to, to do repairs to that. The pontoon, to the best of our knowledge, is in good shape. It's, it's towards the end of its life cycle, there, there could be a patch, but the cost to patch versus replace, replace is probably the right option. No, no immediate urgency. So, it was important to, in this phase, to inspect the wharf and pontoon, to make sure there was no immediate urgency. It's not going to, no catastrophic failure. It would work for a couple more years, and that is what our consultant has recommended. That's why we stopped at the investigation stage and did the other more important projects. So, yard paving. So, the red is what we've cut up to do the, the structures and the site services. The orange is where the old canopy is. Well, that should be red now because we, we've already taken that canopy down. The, if you look at the angled piece, that's the, that's the new pill booth, that's where you come off the ferry, you're going to drive under, under that canopy. And by removing that other, the yellow, the orange canopy, it's a, it's more effective to drive, to drive away from the property. So, we, we have two options. One is a patch, but the right option is a complete pave, and I don't have funding to do that right now, so it may end up unfortunately being a patch. That's, that's quite a patch. So, if we have a Phase Two opportunity for future funding, I would recommend a complete yard pave. The marine, the marine works have to have, the life cycle needs to be revisited and do some, some repairs to extend the life, and the terminal building expansion is major. And at present, CBSA's number one priority was the, the booths inspections, which they're getting, as far as I'm concerned, state of the art. But the terminal building, it's going to look exactly like it did before we started, nothing's changed, only new windows. We're painting the inside and new windows, new sills. We've added vestibules, because before it was just single door. And there you go.
Thank you very much, Mark. I believe Consulor Lauren Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. Couple of questions for you. You mentioned about the pontoon. What's the age of those right now?
Oh, I don't have the numbers.
You were there for the, but you said that's a life, life end?
Rick from Bay Ferries is confident that it's no issue. He's monitoring that, pumps it occasionally, there is some little bit of patch sometimes, but he's fully confident that it's going to last a little longer.
Yes, I can, I can appreciate that, and I'm sure they are. And that's my next question about the wharf repair. That wharf's been there for, since the Blue Nose came. I don't believe any repairs ever come, have done to that.
There's not many wharfs around, small craft, you don't, you don't find rebar, so it's not like it's not typical. It doesn't mean it's catastrophic failure, but at some point in time, it needs to get done.
So, we're pretty comfortable with that, too, I would say.
CBSL is saying you should be working on this for two to four years. That was their, their recommendation.
Yeah, but as I can see from your, the underground work that you've done with all the, the new piping, well, that's a critical part that has been done, so that can be put to bed and forget about it for another 50 years.
Oh, the underground's fine. There's new hydrants, new lighting, new power systems, it's all good now.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good project going on down there. You know, we are getting some negative feedback because of no ferry again, what we paid to keep the ferry there and whatnot, but, you know, at the end of the, at the end of the day, a ferry terminal is a very critical piece of our infrastructure that we need when the borders do open up again and we're allowed to have ferry services again, and we're ready. No sense waiting until it's opened and do things, let's do it now while we're, while we are closed, so thank you, Mark, for that presentation.
Is there any way that other picture could go up?
I think Vicky emailed you a, an image, Mike?
I responded to her. She just wanted to send it to everybody.
But I think Mark would like to see it up on that monitor, yeah.
Just I have an email on there.
Oh, okay, yeah, so it's not going to be possible to have it here?
Okay, doesn't matter, anyway, just an action shot. Today's a real cool day. All three canopies are being raised today, the first one's already up. The big one for the pill booth, actually it takes three cranes to hoist it, three picks to lift it. It's worth a drive-by sometime because when they go up, it's going to totally look, change the look, so it's a pretty cool day, actually, on site. I can't wait to get back.
All right, Deputy Ward, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy, for the presentation, and, and yes, we have had interruption in the ferry service over the last number of years, which is unfortunate for, for a variety of reasons. But again, I'm pleased that we were able to project and see it through to its end, or at least the first phase. And just a reminder to everybody, I remind myself of this sometimes because we're ultimately tasked with, with voting to approve these, these move forwards. And, you know, I hear lots in, in the community, I've heard this over and over again, you know, we, we've lost our airplane. You know, we, we've lost our bus. Well, the boat, we haven't lost, so, and I think it, it's a very, very positive thing to see the three councils working together with the provincial and federal governments to fund this important project. And these infrastructure projects, they're big money, obviously. We've got more to do probably at, at some point, or somebody's got more to do, federal, provincial governments. But long-term, that ferry link is critical to Nova Scotia, critical to our area, and, you know, we, we should, we should be, we should be moving ahead right now because we do have, you know, the asset is, we've improved it, but there are pieces that are sort of not critically depreciated at this point, but, but they will be at some point in the future, so I think that we should, you know, get on this and move to the, to the next phase, or phases that we need to complete, you know, to welcome Americans and others to our shores and to ensure the vibrancy of our, our economy moving forward. So, again, we, we can't do much about the bus at this point. The, the air service, we'll, we'll look at that moving forward in the airport. But again, I think we should keep riding the ball and keep marching forward. There's nothing more important than infrastructure. So, again, Mr. Brophy, thank you for all the work on this file, and thank you very much for the presentation this morning, it was excellent.
If I could, if there was one lucky break with the no servers, we didn't have to phase, we didn't have to work around a ferry, we didn't have to work around customers, so we were, that's probably the reason why we worked to our budget and didn't, didn't go over that, that was a lucky break, to be able, to be able to do that. And we're certainly seeing, seeing the finish line. The inside of the ferry terminal is going to look just like it did before, though. Brick, quarry tile, dated finishes, we painted, we painted, and that's it. So, that, that certainly, for people getting off the boat, it'd be kind of nice to make that a little bit, not so dated inside.
Consulor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's nice to finally meet you, Mark. I hope you're enjoying the briar with your family this week.
Oh, yeah.
I just had one question. You talked about patchwork paving. Do you have a number on what the patchwork would be versus?
Patchwork's about a quarter million dollars, complete is about $900,000.
Thank you.
And transportation's aware of that number.
Consulor Patti Dirkie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mark, and I also want to thank you for the tour that I had last, what's today? Wednesday, last week, or was that this week? Anyway, I have to say that it was, it's really, it was really nice to go and see the changes at the terminal, because I used that terminal when I was a little girl, and, you know, nothing had, has changed over the years. And the point that I need to make is that we can't wait so long before we update some of this infrastructure that is in place. And, you know, we've waited a long time to do something to this ferry terminal, and I think, as Trevor said as well, we need to go from here and look at, okay, what's, what's next, and keep the ball rolling. Because when we have visitors come, we want them to see something that looks amazing and not derelict. So, I'm pleased with what we've done, I'm pleased with the commitment that we've made, and, and I think when those, once those borders open up, that will be very busy. Thank you.
Any more questions? Apologies, any more questions to council? I see none. Thank you very much, Mark, appreciate it.
No problem.
Anybody else want a tour, just come on down. I'll bring my claw hammer.
Oh, he didn't see that.
All right, just bear with us, following safety protocols, the CEO's going to wipe down the area where Mr. Brophy was. So, bear with us, please. All right, thank you very much, Victoria.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 6.2. We have with us Rob Stevenson from the Western Regional Enterprise Network. Microphone is on, and the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much, council, for receiving me for a presentation today. I'm from the Western REN, and I think there may be a few new counselors around the table. For anybody that doesn't know, the Western REN is an economic development agency. It is working for and sponsored by seven municipal units, ranging from Barrington, Argyle, Yarmouth Town, Yarmouth Municipality, Clare, Digby, and Digby Municipality. They sponsor us in equal parts, and the Western REN works to help develop the area on a region-wide basis, from basically from Barrington to Bear River. Some of the projects or areas of emphasis that the Western REN has, we have what's called the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Program, helping companies to bring in immigrant workers, helping them through that. We also have the successor program and the succession planning. We have the connector program. We're also very active in the green energy initiative, as well as we were a driving force and instrumental in the internet initiative that's been going on for the past few years. I'm in the Western REN, I've been there a year and a half. I'm what's known as the Business Now lead, and I look at working with businesses, companies across the region, and helping them through a number of different things. In COVID, we helped them navigate through the myriad of different programs that were available for support during COVID, during COVID. And now, I'm focused a bit more on a couple of the business initiatives for helping the private sector, for helping our employers. One of the main ones that we had to focus on this year has been continuous improvement. The, yeah, overall, Business Now, I'll just step back here, is dedicated to supporting and helping our local businesses, our employers. It's helping to keep and create jobs in the area and overall in economic development. And that's, again, across the region. We have a region-wide perspective. Continuous improvement is one of the main projects here. Continuous improvement, or lean manufacturing, as it's called, is a consultant-driven project where we go to a company with a consultant, the consultant works with the management team in the company to minimize a company's waste in its processes and systems and make the company more efficient. It's facilitated by a consultant, it analyzes the internal processes, and it works for, while the consultant is there, he's working with the management team of the company and is basically presenting and training a mindset in the company so that the management team themselves can look for ways to make the company more efficient. The objectives of the continuous improvement program are to help our region's employers by making them stronger companies, more competitive, and that's competitive on an international level these days, more sustainable, able to hire more people and maintain those jobs, and able to grow the region's economy, and to reinvest their profits in their businesses. Ultimately, we want to provide more jobs for our people here and to keep our people employed well into the future. Basically, the breakdown of the projects from the Western REN are, they're, we're offering a subsidized one-week project, which serves as an introduction to continuous improvement and lean. From this fiscal, we've completed 14 projects so far. We have about 19 slated to be finished. That means we have three or four already started and two more to start and finish in April, so we'll have about 19 done from, I guess we did one in February of 2020 until now. We had a bit of a lull in the spring, of course, but, and again, those are across the region. We've had many positive outcomes, and we'll talk a little bit about that going forward. The vast majority of the companies are looking to book more continuous improvement work in their firms because they see the advantage of it, and, you know, it has impact, and there's always more to do. The continuous improvement looks to reduce waste in an organization like transport, excessive inventory, unnecessary motion, overproduction, overprocessing, defects, and also to eliminate bottlenecks and wasted time. The benefits of implementing lean are to improve product quality, reduce lead times, improve the customer experience, make the entire operation more sustainable, also to improve and involve employees more and improve their satisfaction, reduce costs, improve inventory processes, and increase profits. We've had a number of testimonials from companies that have been, that have gone through the continuous improvement process. In one company, we reduced transportation waste by 23%. We've reduced cleaning costs by 48 hours per, person hours per day in one. We've increased profits in one operation by 26%, and we've increased productivity by 9% or 800, or $600,000 in sales. In one company, one, one-week project, a single week, they actually doubled the production output on one of their production lines, which is quite impressive. And we have a number of good testimonials from AF Tario. They've had a tremendous impact on internal logistics and the stockroom, which is a very large part of a boat shop operation. We've also done, these are earlier projects. We have done projects at Riverside Lobster, and we've done projects at IMO Foods. Now, I haven't incorporated any testimonials from our new projects, but I have several from them, but they're basically just coming out now because these have been so recent. Another project that I'm working on, and it's similar, it's called the Virtual Advisor Program. And this is, this enables companies to get a, some advice from a senior seasoned executive, an expert in the field. And we're working with a group called Boomers Plus. They have a pool of very experienced senior business people who are basically available to offer advice and assistance to businesses. This is more focused to smaller businesses, especially owner-operators and entrepreneurs to help them out. It can, it consists not of a consultant coming in to work with a company, but of phone calls between the advisor and the business owner. And it's about four to six calls over a two-to-three-month period, and it's free to the business, and the advisor is selected to help out with the most pressing issue that that business has. And there's a bit of a survey that identifies that, where the business owner will identify what the main issue is. We have advisors who are specialists, experts, and seasoned in virtually every aspect. in virtually every aspect of business, from accounting and finance through sales and marketing, IT and e-commerce, quality control, et cetera. Everything you can think of there is someone who has been a high-level executive at a large corporation specialized in that area who can offer some very good advice to, to an entrepreneur. And that's basically it. So that one is, that one is free. And again, I really thank Council for taking the time to hear about my programs. My main request to Council is if you know of business owners, entrepreneurs or larger companies who might be able to take advantage of these services, please reach out to me and/or to them and put us in contact and we'll help them out with that. Once again, thanks very much for, for having me here today. And I'm open to any questions as well, sir.
Thank you very much, Rob. Move on to the questions. I see Counselor Lauren Cushing has a question, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I guess I've been the first one to speak the last two times, but again, I'm very impressed about the work that's being done through the Western RENs. Some of your success stories that you've had there, when a company is able to increase their, their profits by 26%, that's, that's a huge, huge increase. And so that's, that certainly is a testimony of, of the success of, of what you're doing. Secondly, I noticed your Virtual Advisor, Advisor Program. And again, that's another very important aspect of your, of your program that you're, you're offering there. Are you, to me, this sounds very similar to what BDC used to... I don't know if they still do this or not, like, you know, Business Development Corporation? Because I know years and years and years ago, when I was in business, I, I approached them and they, they had a consultant come down to talk to me about things. So I think this, it's a very, it's another very good program that you have to work with. And so I think you guys are doing an excellent job and keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right. The next one would be Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. You have the floor.
Thank you for bringing us up to date with the REN activities, Mr. Stevenson, and a good presentation. And that Boomers Plus opportunity for folks in the area seems like a fantastic way to, to link people that, that, you know, are trying to move forward and entrepreneurial with, with people who are, are expert and have had experiences that they can certainly draw on. So thanks for the presentation. Looking forward to hearing from you in the future.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next one on the docket, I believe, Counselor Nick Hilton. You have the floor.
Good morning, Rob. I'm one of the new councilors you were speaking of. And just as you said, like, one of the biggest things that we can do is spread the word via the word. And I was just wondering, what is the easiest ways to navigate people to your services? Do you have anything that we can hand out? I know that's probably more old school, but something that we could have with us would be beneficial.
Yeah, I can, I can send you in some, basically our one-pager on the program. And I'll maybe send that to Victoria to distribute out. But definitely there's, yeah, we're, we're not hard to get a hold of, for sure. So if you do see people who can take advantage of this service, I've seen real good impact from both of these programs for companies. It's, you know, make sure they, they, they get a hold of it. The CI, Continuous Improvement Program is, is funded to 90% and the other program is free. So in the Continuous Improvement Program, you're, you're talking, you know, that ACOA is kicking in several thousand dollars for our one-week project. So definitely reach out to business owners that you know and have them take advantage of it while it's, while it's available.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Next on the docket is Counselor Sherry Hulbert. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. I'm the other new council member. It's nice to meet you. And I appreciate the presentation. I know on the surface I had an idea. I could, I think I could explain to my constituents what REN was, but having this presentation to drill down a little deeper is helpful for me. The, I was making a kind of a mental list the other day of the small businesses, medium businesses and business owners in my district specifically. And I was, I was kind of amazed at the amount of entrepreneurial spirits and, you know, small and medium-sized businesses in the, in my area. And so this is good to have and to connect, connect them to you and you to them. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's great.
All right. Thank you very much. I see no one else has any microphones flashing, but I do want to point out the testimonials there from, from some of the large or small businesses in the area like AF Terrio, Riverside Lobster and IMO Foods. They, they speak volumes to the work, work that's being done. And it's also pretty impressive that, to double production output on one production line within a week.
Yeah.
So that just goes, that, that's pretty impressive, so. Thank you very much for, for coming in and appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, in an effort to strictly follow the COVID-19 protocols that Dr. Strang and the province, the government of Canada have enacted, got to make sure that we set an example. And I'd like to thank everyone for, for wearing masks when they're out and about. And also another note to the public is we have glass partitions. All right, we'll move on. Item 6.3, Derek Sutherland. We're 15 minutes ahead of schedule. So you have the floor, Derek, when you're, when you're ready.
Good morning, Warden, fellow councils and staff. Just going to bring some highlights of our Public Works Department's 2021 operations in our, in this annual report. I'll just want to touch on some of the higher operational things that was achieved this year. The overall Public Works Department's, our main achievement this year was having the construction and subsequent occupancy of the new Public Works Garage. This achievement by MODI has allowed the department to organize and maintain our staff and our equipment and provide a clean, safe space for the staff to work in. That's been a huge, huge bonus to us. And again, I think myself and staff are very appreciative of steps we took to get here for that. That's, it's brought us a long way in a short period of time to, to get things looked after. The COVID pandemic created some challenges that were, that we all never seen, but with our department, with some planning and input from all levels of our staff, we were able to maintain a good level of service and continue and provide necessary critical infrastructure needs of MODI. The department's staff maintained, was maintained at all times. We wrote with some rotational planning and project-specific works along with the new building allowed us to keep things moving and keep operations pretty consistent. Our wastewater infrastructure from the operational lens was good. We completed some high-level stuff around the SCADA, which is Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition for our LS-1 Milo Station. This work was a platform for further INI work, which is our infiltration inflow. We had planned on getting at that this past year, but with the COVID shutdowns, some of those project plans never got started or was minimal on getting, getting done. So we're ready to go this spring on some of those. Other systems works where the SOFA wastewater condition assessment was completed on the wastewater management. The new compressor and controls at the Port Maitland Sewerage Treatment Plant was completed as well. Department capital items from the fiscal that were completed were the tendering and purchase of the new one-ton truck for our department. To date, looking at the department operational budgets and taking COVID into factor, we're on target with budgets. The majority of our operations stayed functioning during COVID and our known operational costs still remained. Winter works to date, which as we see today with the sunshine, still, still taking place, we, has had a good area of savings, mainly that was around the fuel, equipment wear items and sand salt usage. Our department worked closely with the Development Department this year and other staff on the subdivision bylaws. It was a big project to get through. The beginning of the works on two proposed sidewalk sections are taking place. We had some work, the works at our 62 Arcom building and is continuing. Development on the fiscal budgets and capital items around the wastewater, mainly SCADA controls and INI planning and other projects being proposed as coming fiscal. We've hired a new team member, Noah DeVoo. Noah DeVoo has joined our staff as a full-time employee, which gives us three full-time staff and during summer months, seasonal staff hiring is, took place with one other worker. I know just yesterday we were finalizing operational capital and, you know, other than some areas of savings around, because of COVID, we look like we're tracking pretty good of what we are, our numbers were. And going forward, we've got a very, I'll say, aggressive plan going forward, both operational and capital. So it looks like we're on target again from, from last year's numbers. I'll open the floor. Any questions?
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
I have a little story to tell first, but we'll, we'll get to the question. We'll get to the question in, in a bit. So during the election campaign, I had a lot of comments, not a lot of comments, but a number of residents from, from the Brooklyn area comment on the weeds growing at the interface of the road and the sidewalk. And what's happened over the years is that, you know, the organic materials built up and some places, it's, you know, it's this thick. And so anyway, I had conversations and long story short, it is, it is kind of in the, in the jurisdiction in the sense of, of Department of Highways or TIR. But no matter, somebody's got to solve the problem. So anyway, one of the few asks that folks had. So I started off with, I don't know, some people were driving by and gave me strange looks. But anyway, I started off as a shovel and a bucket, believe it or not. So I went up, had a, had a homeowner join in, which was great. He brought a wheelbarrow out and we started going along. And when I first started off, I didn't really contemplate just how big a job it was. But anyway, we started, I went up once, twice, three times. It sounds like a song, but anyway. So, long story short is, somebody was, another gentleman was, was, you know, fixing a dirt road or a driveway next across the street and so forth. And he came over and finally said, well, I can just put my bucket down and scrape along. And he did and I shoveled it and he dumped it in the ditch. And long story short is, after a little bit more cleanup, I was done after several hours. But I did learn a lot and you do learn, you know, in the education world, it's learning by doing. So I did learn a lot because originally I'd said, well, it needs to be the sweeper that comes by and there's only one of those in the province and it's hard to schedule and all the rest of it. So that's where we sort of started off. So that's done, that section. My biceps are still recovering. So anyway, we got that done. But there is a lot of that material in the Hebron, on the Hebron sidewalk. So what I, my ask is, is for you and your staff to collaborate with TIR. I don't care who does it, if it's us, but all that's required is a truck to go by with a, with a small loader or tractor with a bucket. And then it's just a matter of a person just kind of shoveling in the bucket and then dumping it. And I, I've learned that the shovel and bucket and wheelbarrow, it can be done that way, but it's very, very long and arduous. It's a quick fix with the, so if you could work with TIR or your staff to have that done, I did learn that the solution is not the sweeper for that. The sweeper can do the small stuff. But anyway, in a couple hours, it could be done with a, with a small front-end loader or tractor. So I'll, I'll leave it to you to collaborate with, with TIR and, and our CEO to, to get that job done because, you know, the residents want it done and it is unsightly and it's an easy fix. I say it's easy, but anyway, I, I hope I don't have to do it. How does that sound? So one's enough.
I can give you a little background on that. I have the opportunity to sit on a stakeholders meeting through our Public Works Association with TIR. That's one of the issues I've brought to the table. And my ask was that we have a, a knowledge of when the sweeper within the province is, is going around to do those areas and like some kind of calendar system so we can address the sidewalk areas that we require to be done when they come here. In the past, we just be lucky enough to catch it driving by and, well, it's here today, right? So, you know, we have asked, have asked of that, of the province to, to inform us of when that's coming. There's a couple of issues with that and it is, even though it is adjacent to our curb that's on sidewalk, the, it's a, the debris are from majority of the roadway. So it becomes a kind of a, like you said, an area of concern. Now, there's two, some areas, there's a growth out of the, between the curb and the asphalt, depending on how the asphalt was laid up against the curb. Other areas you'll see, we have a concrete curb and gutter where in you, and the material will just lay in the gutter. So there's no actual growth coming out of the ground. Both do collect. One just seems to be worse than the other. But it is something that we've been pressing the province to, to work with us on and we'll continue to do that for sure.
All right.
So, so yeah, and, and just to, just to follow up and bring this... So what I was saying, I don't know if I was well-heard. The solution is not, because I learned this, is not the sweeper. Because the sweeper's going to go by and there's like clumps of material. It's, it's this thick and it's grown into the weeds. I don't think the sweeper will do it. It's just a matter of having a, a, a little tiny loader go by and scrape it and dump it. So, and I know we've had meetings, collaborations and so forth and don't want to show my frustration too, too much. But we've invested in public works buildings. We've invested in tractors and trucks and all I'm saying is, let's get this solved by summer. It was easy enough for me to go out and shovel it and have two people from the public help me out. It should be easy enough for us and TIR to collaborate to get the job done. So that's what I'll say about it at this point. And, you know, let's just solve this. I don't want to have to talk about it again. And I surely don't want to have to go out and shovel it myself. So I don't think there's any need for Council to be doing that, but I did. So I'll, I'll, you know, if the CAO's got intervened and get this done, we'll get it done. But I, I don't like this conversation, doing this. Just get it done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Sherry Hulbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the work that you and your department do for us, us and the municipality. When, and back in the fall, we actually had a tour of some of our municipal assets and one was the Port Maitland Sewer, I'm not sure the correct word, but that building, Treatment Plant, and a couple of the lift stations. And your employee who gave us the tour was very knowledgeable of things that I never understood but had a better understanding after the fact. But I just want to say thank you to you and your team for what you do for us. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any more? Hearing them, Counselor, Deputy Warden, I, I got a question. What, 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 where were you talking about again? What road was it? Yeah, I have, yeah.
Sorry. My apologies. I didn't turn that off. Oh, the Brooklyn Road, which is with the sidewalk. There's a, there's a section there and we, we cleared that off. And then the other part is, that's not done yet, is the Hebron sidewalk, so. And I apologize for being so passionate about it, but it just seems like such a small issue that it could be, should be able to be resolved between the two, the two governments.
Thank you very much, Derek.
Thank you.
All right, the next one on the list is Greg Shea, Director of Finance.
We seem to be moving later, right along here today. We never seem to be able to follow the schedule. We're either way behind or way ahead. Today we're, we're ahead a little bit, so I'm hoping that.
No, I'll go as fast as I can.
No, we're a little bit ahead, which you just never know sometimes.
So I'm in control of this thing?
You're in control. You have the floor.
All right. So, good morning, everyone, and thanks for this wonderful opportunity to be before you. Um, so this morning, what we really wanted to do was just kind of have a quick look at the, uh, a kind of a quick recap of this whole COVID situation and how it's affected us from a financial perspective. Um, and quite frankly, the fallout is still, still occurring, so it's very hard to be definitive and for sure. Um, but we do, we do have some idea now of, of what it's meant to us in terms of financial costs. Um, and we'll keep planning going forward with that lens on and try to be as prudent as we can be, um, as we go. So just a very quick and dirty on this COVID situ, COVID, uh, phenomena around the, around the financial aspect of it and the, and specifically the safe restart funding. Um, so the impetus was the lobbying of the municipalities and the towns through the NSFM for federal assistance to combat financial hardship that was anticipated to be experienced at the municipal level as a result of the COVID pandemic. I'm sure as counselors, a lot of you will remember the discussions that were going on through the NSFM in the early days of the pandemic about what the financial fallout might be for municipalities. So the province, in partnership with the Government of Canada, unveiled the Safe Start Agreement. And it was in a sixty-seven point five million dollar fund that was to be distributed to the municipal governments based on some earlier submissions that were again coordinated through NSFM that were intended to try to make a projection of revenue losses due to the COVID pandemic. And so this, as you realize, was completely uncharted territory at the time. Um, so forty-four point three of the sixty-seven point five was designated for operations and twenty-three point two was designated for transit. Um, some comments to make around the fund is that there is an expectation that accountability audits will be conducted sometime in the future. Um, however, there's no details on who is likely to be subjected to the audits nor what the accountability markers are. Um, there are no details as well as the timelines around the spending allotment. Um, right now, the approach is we'll wait and see what happens from the provincial level. Um, the expense categories are for operational expenses and it's, it's not to be confused with capital purchases, which have been categorically denied as being not eligible for COVID funding reimbursement. So that's an important, um, important parameter to be aware of. Um, there were four specific categories of expenditures that could qualify as being reimbursable for RSA funds. Now the court, there's four specific categories, but within the categories, they're kind of well, they're broad and not too well defined, you know, which leaves the opportunity for uncertainty, confusion and varied interpretations and argument. First category was to address increased operating costs resulting from reduction in revenue due to COVID. Second category was to continue to implement social distancing and infection prevention and control protocols required to operate facilities, public places and effectively deliver services to citizens. The third category is to support safe transit operations and innovative solutions required to adjust to modified capacities. That's one category in particular that we're not going to be able to have much use of. And then the fourth and final was just to add personal, additional, personal protective equipment. There is an accounting and reporting function, um, with these. The reporting expenditures by category will be on a schedule attached to the annual financial information return. This is the financial package that we submit to the province each year on our results. Unspent funds must be transferred to the operating reserve and earmarked until reported expenditures have been deemed RSA eligible. So there is a risk in my mind pending further negotiation that some of the funds might have to be returned. And this is something we have to be mindful of as we go forward and before we, we expend too many of these funds without the proper check-offs being assigned to the, to the expense categories. So, and a reserve continuity schedule will also form part of the annual first emission package. This is a similar format that they use for us, for tracking and accounting for our federal gas tax funds. They just, they just copied from that formula and this is how we're gonna have to report the spend. So it'll be a continuity and a go-forward. There'll be an opening balance each year, there'll be how much you spent on COVID expenses and then there'll be a closing balance. And at some point at the end of the day, we may have to account for those expenses that have been claimed as COVID eligible. Um, our allotment of the RSA funds, the sixty-seven point five million that the province received was five ninety-two, seven sixty-eight. And then there was a small fee charged by NSFM for their efforts, uh, in negotiating these funds and representing the units to get this, 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 uh, funding envelope from the, from the feds. Their fee for, to us was twenty-one hundred and forty dollars. And so our net, our net receipts for the Safe Restart Fund were five hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. What I think is noteworthy is that there's present, and it's, to the best of my knowledge, as far as we're aware, there is not presently available a comprehensive written agreement between the federal government and the province of Nova Scotia to provide a framework or the rules of engagement or the terms and conditions or other things for the management and accountability of this fund, which is, this is what's causing us some of the, some of the gray area for the municipalities and what they can actually do with the monies. Uh, so what we're doing here are, is we're reviewing our operations throughout the COVID period, through this, now through this RSA lens to try to identify the financial effect that the pandemic has had on our finances. COVID has had impacted our operations, but, there's a big but there, the impact is not being, it's not being, the impact has been counterintuitive in some aspects of, and not at all what we expected. Intuitively, we prepared our business and financial plan with the underlying assumption that revenues in several areas would fall, cash collections would be strained and expenses curtailed to match reduced service levels. Well, as it turns out, there have been some surprises. On the revenue side, um, taxes and area rates have remained on track. Uh, other taxes have jumped significantly from our budget and that's largely to do with the deed transfer phenomenon that we seen, um, as well as building permits. Building permits is a lot as big a ticket item for us financially, but there has been an explosion of building permits as well, which is counter to what we thought might have happened under the pandemic situation. So there's been an upside in revenues, taxes and area rates, um, have been stable. Uh, the future remains to be seen about future assessments, but for now, they're, they're positive. Um, so the surprises for tax revenues might materialize in twenty-one, twenty-two, once we see the magnitude of the appeals process and on the commercial side, maybe the closures process, but hopefully not. Um, this is tax collections, it's a little bit hard to read, um, and there's a note on that's, that you can't see, but really what it means is that the end of the day, essentially, our tax collections really have been just as positive as they were in the past despite the pandemic. Um, we had, we typically have a huge spike in twenty-twenty, you can see a big spike in collections in June, which is right after the tax bills are issued and that's thirty, thirty to forty-five days after tax bills are issued and most of the receipts come in. This year, it spread out a little bit over the months following the tax receipts into July and August. But by the end of August, we still had collected over eighty-five percent of our total tax receipts, which is typical from other years, eighty, eighty to eighty-five percent of the receipts come in in the first couple of months. So again, counter to what you might have thought, the pandemic didn't seem to impact our taxpayers' cash flow at this stage of the game. They really were on the ball with, uh, with, uh, addressing their tax bills, which is, which was, you know, really helped us in our, in our cash flow management. On the expenditure side, they responded a little bit more as predicted. Um, not so much at the service level end, with the exception of leisure services, which had curtailed, you know, their service delivery significantly because they involve typically large groups of people. But the, the, uh, the cutbacks were more concentrated at the staff level. So these, again, numbers are not hugely magnificently big numbers on our total budget, but it gives you, uh, the flavor of the types of things that were curtailed as a result of the pandemic. A lot of those are travel. Um, and leisure services took a hit on their training and their summer and fall programs. Tourism was down, so you see a reduction in grants, uh, as well as, um, grants to organizations. You remember that when we set our budget process for the grants and the tourism, we did that in the spring of the year and we anticipate, we, so we set our budget based on all of the grants really that were, acts that came into us, but then of obviously the, uh, what you really approved, it wasn't till September, so the difference, the difference is going to be seen in our budget process. So conference and courses is another one that's way down. A lot of them typically involve, involve travel accommodations that didn't occur. There's still some courses that can go on, um, through, you know, virtually, through the internet and through Zoom meetings and things, but certainly you can get a flavor of the types of expenses that were impacted by COVID. So now what we're doing is we're trying to focus in on some of the areas that may be COVID impacted in terms of additional costs for us, because again, we need to justify the spend out of the Safe Restart Funds on, on those four broad and not well-defined categories about what's COVID eligible. So these are some of the areas that we're looking at right now. Um, and we don't have all the numbers in, of course, we're still reviewing things and collecting things, but we're looking at things like, uh, the incremental costs of election from going digital versus the old-fashioned way. Uh, interest forgiveness, you recall that you, uh, you forgave interest on our balances for several months in the spring as an effort to help, uh, relieve some pressure on taxpayers. These numbers to the right are just rough numbers now of kind of where we're at, um, that we've seen. For example, interest forgiveness cost us roughly fifty-six thousand dollars over that two or three month period. Overtime labor costs for all departments is being examined to see what, what, what COVID instigated in terms of extra additional overtime hours for all levels of staff. Additional custodial was required, of course, and PPE procurement and cleaning as part of the whole COVID regime. There was some building and chamber renos required. Um, and I see that number is understated right now, but that'll be corrected when we get to the real, real reporting. Uh, and of course, then there's some meeting, additional meeting and preparation costs. You know, we've had to have some meetings off-site, which adds some costs to organization and cleaning. And then there's the support to other municipal organizations. So we don't know the full impact yet of things like Remo and the Mariners Center and how that's gonna convert into financial expense for us to support some of their COVID-induced pain. Um, it's important to note too, that because of the COVID and our early planning days, um, we deferred pursuing a number of projects or delayed specific procurement decisions of upwards of two million dollars and items that were originally identified in the capital investment plan before we began the COVID budget setting process. We pared our capital investment plan down to things that were really essential or really committed, too far committed to hold back. Uh, and that's the end. So that's really, that's really a, you know, in a nutshell, that's the kind of what COVID has done to us in the financial front and how we're trying to, um, grapple with it and understand it and measure the effects of it on our, on our operations.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Greg. That was, uh, really informative. Um, what I'm wondering is something like the, um, two seventy-five Main Street. Um, the, the organization was impacted by COVID to start with, um, so they had to close and then, you know, the thoughts of us having to invest money to get that back up and running programs, all of those things. Is it possible that we could be using some of that money towards, towards that? Uh, because that definitely was, um, uh, fallout from COVID.
See, it's difficult to be sure, but I think with the way the language is right now on the spending categories, and I think the way the discussions continue with, uh, you know, with the municipalities and the province and probably the feds, I think, I think anything is wide open right now for argument. I mean, it needs to tie back somehow to COVID-induced pain and loss, but I wouldn't preclude anything at this stage of the game without having much more definition delivered from, from the funders about, you know, what they're going to accept at the end of the day. I mean, it's, I, you know, I'd rather be aggressive and try to get the funding through that envelope than to just stay, just stay away from it and be afraid to approach it.
Right, because I, I would rather see us use it, we have it, than lose it, right? So if we can find avenues to, to use that money, I think that's to our advantage.
Again, the signals to us, or at least in the meetings that I've had with my finance counterparts in the province, it's been very unclear about the future potential refundability or payback of this, this, these monies and how long they will go down the road with these funds not being spent without asking for them back. Like, it's, it's, to me, it's quite disturbing and there's some risk there, so I think.
Right.
We gotta be careful about that.
We do. Uh, another thing is that, you know, we, we came forward and did the engineering for the sidewalks and, and a lot of that, uh, these projects are having to do with, um, providing more opportunities for people to get out, um, and to be active and, and I think that came as a result also from, from COVID, so.
Yeah, one thing that is clear is they do not want us to allot these monies to capital projects. That is something that they did make clear in the, in the early days. Now, and you know, again, maybe the water will change the beans as conversations go on, but right now, that's, capital projects are a no-no.
Okay.
For the COVID envelope.
Interesting.
Madam C O, you had a comment?
I, I did. So, um, if council recalls, I have a much more conservative approach to using the Safe Restart money than what you just heard from the Director of Finance around two seventy-five Main Street. So I'll keep in mind a couple of things around that project. It's gonna be largely capital work that we will be asked to fund at two seventy-five Main Street, which is clearly out. And the other piece is if we exhaust Safe Restart money and we exhaust your comfortable bandwidth on investing our own money and we get audited and we have to pay money back, we need to be mindful of that too. So I think that's the point that Greg was making is conversations amongst the Directors of Finance and the C O's about where is that comfortable, happy medium, because we cannot, no matter how much we ask, get clarity from the province. So that's kind of the balancing act we're trying to strike.
I, I can't tune your back on.
Wow, I can be loud. Do you want to use my teacher voice? Is that something then that we should be writing to NSFM to, to direct them, to assist with, um, with that?
They've definitely been trying to help us, um, whether it's NSFM or it's the premier. I think Greg made a good point earlier on. I think the problem arises from the fact that there isn't clarity from Ottawa down to the provinces and then out to the municipalities. I think that's part of their, their struggle in their defense.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Greg.
All right, the next one on would be Counselor Lauren Christian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Greg, for that, uh, that update. My concern will be, uh, related to what Counselor Durkey was saying and what Madam C O was saying and what, uh, finance person Greg Shea was saying about if we spend money that we don't have really clarity on, on what we should be spending that money on and we think it's okay, then all of a sudden the feds and the province come back and say, oh, no, no, you can't spend your money on that, now you have to pay it back. That's what, is that what you're leading to, Madam C O and, uh, and Greg also, right?
Yep.
We gotta be careful on how we spend that money. We don't want to be, you know, giving it away and then turn around paying it back.
Right, so I'll start and Greg can fill in. So there were a couple of pillars in Greg's presentation earlier on that are very clear. You know, some things around PPE and accommodations in buildings to create, um, allow, like, for example, what we did here in this chamber to make it safe to adhere to the public health measures. There are some things that are very clear. Um, there, there are other things, you know, to Counselor Durkey's point, it's less clear. Should we be trying? I think that we should absolutely be having conversations with what we think council might like to do and beta test it with some decision makers who might be program evaluators or on audit teams and, and get their thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Sherry Hurliver, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Shea, for your efforts during this difficult time. I can appreciate the cautiousness of what we're doing and how we're spending. And I think that for me, being a new counselor from November until now, I think that, you know, we've done the best job that we can given, you know. I'm, I'm a rule follower, so I can't imagine how you're dealing. It makes me a little anxious to think that we have no spending timelines. We really don't have any guidelines on how to spend it. We don't know when we need to spend it by. All of those things for me would make me anxious as a finance director, and I guess that's why I'm not a finance director. Um, I, I think that I'm confident in leaving it in your, your hands and, you know, the staff's hands to make recommendations back to us on what we should be spending it on. And, you know, I'm confident that moving forward, we'll do everything we can to try to, try to get the information that we need.
Yeah.
To make the right decisions. Thanks.
Sure, thank you. Now we'll keep trying to take our signals from the province as much as they'll deliver them, and in the meantime, we'll just be very, very cautious in how we manage this, this, this pot of money that was dropped on our laps.
All right, thank you. Next one, Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's nice to see you, Greg. Uh, I don't like the idea of giving back money. I really don't. I like the idea of spending money. So could we not be picking projects that we wanted to improve on already? And then if we had to get to the point where we had to reimburse some of that, we'd be okay with that? Like talking about technology, um, we've had a few issues with, um, uh, the sound quality in this room especially, or at the Rotary Club, or things like that. Those are all investments that could be made to improve, um, improve on virtual meetings related to, to COVID. So why not use some of that money to do this? Grants to organizations, that falls under this as well, does it not? The suspected, or is that not the program that we're looking at improving? You can comment on that if you wish.
So, so yes, um, in the conversation when we received the accountability framework, there was a conversation about supporting not-for-profits who couldn't fundraise because of COVID through this stream. So you know that there's a proposal before you today around that. Greg's table on slide 18, I think it is, that's where we're trying to pick the, um, this is the exercise we're going through to do exactly what you've just said. Find the expenses that we've incurred as a result of complying with the public health orders. Because we don't know, we do know that obviously we're going to have to reserve some of this money beyond March 31st of this fiscal year, and we have to provide information about how we flowed the money and, and what's left. There could be projects next year that we will need to invest in to continue to conduct the affairs of the municipality under public health protocols. But the other piece that Greg highlighted earlier on, and we can't forget this, is we don't know if there's going to be a lag in the impact on municipal revenues as a result of COVID, um, when the dust settles. So while assessment rolls are up and there is, there's good activity, we don't know if there's actually going to be a market correction, an increase in appeals to assessment, if there's going to be an increase in uncollected taxes. We don't know all those things. So I agree, we don't want to give money back, um, but we also, this money is intended to protect the municipality from negative financial impacts due to COVID. So we're trying, we're trying to walk the line.
We really have, I understand what you're saying, and we will try our best not to return the money, but we are really in the gray area right now is our, our interpretation of what is COVID-induced may not necessarily be the federal auditor's idea of what's COVID-induced. The problem is there's a big gap between here and the Auditor General in Ottawa, and that was alluded to us in our meetings, that, that at some point, the Auditor General could be reviewing and auditing these, these safe restart funding agreements and, and auditing the expenditures. And right now, with the lack of clarity and a lack of an agreement that's written down precisely with definitions and, and the types of things that might qualify, including, including helping other organizations, we're kind of, we're on the, we're walking the line there right now. We're trying to find our way on, to stay on the line. It's difficult.
I know with, I know with other COVID relief programming, they're, they're looking into them now and, and, and making sure that people follow the guidelines, and, and I'm all for that, I guess, in case there was ever a third wave or, um, just to make sure that we're preparing ourselves, and we could do that by spending a little bit of money for certain issues.
Yeah, for sure. And then, then we have to frame it in the right way, because again, we're not, at this stage of the game, we're not allowed to invest in capital works with this money. So it has to be, when you do your fit-ups and your retros and your preparations, you know, you've got to be careful about how you frame that.
Thank you. Absolutely. I don't want the Auditor General knocking on our door and saying that was not a, an approved expense, but we also need the clarity. I see there's no more questions, and Greg, thank you for the opportu, wonderful opportunity, as you put it, to bore us.
There's a part two.
Yeah, I know there is a part two.
I wasn't sure if I had to stay for the part two or not. Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, you're gonna have to stay for the part two.
Okay.
All right.
No, he's not done his presentation.
He's not done his presentation, so we're gonna have to send through more of that.
I think you were originally provided the income operations financial statement summary earlier. Um, so if you want to pull that up, Mr. IT guy.
I'm not sure, you know, the summary's not linked correct.
Okay.
So I'll have to walk through it.
Okay. Are they going to be able to, is there anything to look at? No.
I, I don't have anything.
All right, that's good.
Smoke and mirrors.
You can run and make copies. You can take a two-minute recess.
I think that would be best for them to be able to walk through that with us that way.
All right, I need a motion to make a, a five-minute recess moved by Counselor Daniel Allen, seconded by the Deputy Warden. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, we will return at 10:30 sharp.
I can do that.
Sorry about that, John. I missed that. Greg sent me that somewhere. I didn't realize we could do that.
I guess now you can.
Yes. Thank you.
That's right.
So you don't, you.
We've got enough, we got a four.
What?
The 12th?
Fourteenth Saturday night, Sunday evening.
Good meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Uh, we all have in front of us the, the budget operating summary, or the operating budget summary, sorry. And, uh, I'll turn the floor back over to, uh, Greg Shea, Director of Finance, and/or the CAO.
Okay, well, thanks, Mr. Chair. So just to kind of carry on to our COVID conversation, a little bit related, a little bit unrelated, it's just a kind of like a really high-level look at our operating results for the year to date, um, which is basically February 28th. This is not drilling down into the weeds of all the myriad of expense accounts that comprise all the numbers you see here in the major categories, but just a, a high-level look of, of where we are so far. On the revenue side, um, it's, again, it's been, it's been more positive than we had anticipated. Taxes are in line with all of our budgeting, uh, as well as special assessments. Uh, and again, the big jump there is, is in the deed transfer taxes, which is in the other tax section. So I guess before I go any further, I really want to caveat this with a, you know, huge italics, bold capital. These are projections, and they're very high-level. You know, we still have a, a month left in our operations. It's a dynamic world with COVID and everything else that's going on. We, we've tried to crystal ball to the best estimates that we can make on how we think some of the higher-level revenues and expenses are going to unroll, um, partly on budget and partly on what we've realized in the last 11 months. But this, this again is just a, a projection, and it's, it's no, by no means necessarily going to represent our final numbers. So the tax revenues, again, are strong. We're projecting to be at around $11 million, uh, slightly more than our budget of 10.7. And our other revenue categories from grants and lieu, from service to other organizations and transfers from other governments, um, to actually be a little bit lower than our budget. Our budget was 2.3 million and our projected actual was 1.8 million. Um, and, and the main reason for the little bit of a projected drop that you see there from the actuals that are at the end of February is because we know that we expect to transfer. We have a, we have that 590 from the RSA in there right now. We expect to move out of revenues and into reserves, so that will cause a some decrease in our revenues in that section for the year. But overall, um, for the year, we do project to be, you know, $12.9 million in revenues, plus or minus, compared to a budget of 13 million. On the expenditure side, um, again, there are some reduced operations a little bit from COVID, um, a lot to do with travel, professional and, uh, grants to orgs and others, but, um, total government services, we're looking at coming in around 1.8, um, close to 2 million, but a little bit under our original budget of 2.159. Then we, then we have transportation, or sorry, protective services, which includes, uh, mostly policing, that's the largest number on there, and fire protection. And we know that there's still some invoices to come in there for the last quarter of the year from, from service providers, from the RSA and from fire protection. So that's why we're projecting that to go from the present 2.1 million to 2.587. It will still, looks like it's going to end up a little bit lower than our original budget of 2.7 million dollars. On road transport, we're going to come in under budget again at $945,000 versus original budget of 1.1 million. Sewage, cation disposal and public health, um, up a little bit. Part of that has to do with some sewer issues, uh, in one area that we're dealing with, but overall, uh, not a big increase of 1.4 million, we're projecting from original budget of 1.295 million. Also, still to come in those, the, the increase in the public health and welfare from '75 to '23 is, is what we're going to receive in invoices for deficits at, uh, the two medical clinics and at the, for what our share of the provincial housing authority deficits are. Environmental planning, uh, again, will probably end up under budget, um, largely because of reduced, uh, effort required in some areas. Uh, for, we had budgeted 447, and now we're looking at maybe 320. But these are all, again, very, plus or minus, they're just projections. Recreation is down. We know that recreation took a big hit this year with their service delivery, so you see the effects of that and their, their spend. From a budget of 720, under an optimistic situation, to what's turned out to be a more likely one of around 568. Uh, there's, there's, of course, no significant change in the interest and principal payments that we make, nor in the transfers to reserves. They're still pretty much on schedule, and it probably will be a little healthier than budgeted, uh, because of some extra surplus we were going to realize in deed transfer and some other things that we typically transfer to reserves. And conditional transfers to other governments, um, we're still expecting to pay out an allotment for our commitment to the ferry terminal project, uh, this year. That's not material, it's not showing up in the actual year-to-date numbers yet, as well as still another payment to the, uh, to the Tri-City Regional Center for Education for their month's payment for March. So, so when that's all said and done, that will be pretty close to budget, that big number at 3.118 million from a budget of 3.16. So when it's all said and done, I think our expenditures are also going to come in at a little bit less than we originally budgeted. We budgeted 13 million and 59,000, and we're looking like we're going to come in at around 12,3, plus or minus. And what, what that will do is yield us a surplus at the end of the year of some half-a-million dollars, I think. That's where we're going to land. It's not typically, it's not actually that unusual. We do usually are fortunate enough to have our operations yield surpluses each year a bit more than we budget, and that allows us to put money in reserves. But so far, um, where we are today, it looks like we could have a budgetary surplus in the half-a-million-dollar range. That's a really high-level recap of our financial results to the end of February.
Thank you very much, Greg. Is there any question to council? Just because this is very high-level, some suggestions in there. Counselor Verdi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question.
You're on now.
Woo-hoo. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Greg. Um, one of the things that concerns me, and we, and we do not know, um, how, what's going to happen, is we know that our real estate and building, um, are hopping in, in the area, which is wonderful for us, for economics, um, economic development, um, businesses, certain businesses, not tourism, but certain businesses are doing exceptionally well. Um, what, you know, what we're really going to have to wait and see is how PVSC, uh, comes back with, you know, evaluations and what, is this just a blip in our market? Is this a short-term? We don't know. We have no clue. Because what's going to happen is if PVSC starts finding or reevaluating some of our properties, then taxes will go up and that could be a concern for a lot of our residents. So, um, I, you know, I know that that's, this is looking great at the moment, but we don't know in the next year how that's going to be affected, and that certainly is a concern, um, to keep our eyes open for that.
If I could just add to that, just comment on that a little bit. Our, the assessment rule is set now for 21, 22 tax year, so we know what our assessment level is and how much it increased or not from last year. But you're correct, my, the next concern is two years out. When we look at 22, 23 and what the delay effect is on the market when PVSC gives us a new assessment rule in the spring of '22. So, yeah, so we do have an idea of what our assessment levels are going into this budget year, but it's the next year is going to be a bigger, it might be a concern.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, Counselor, because this could be a blip, we're not sure on how it's going to react, because as everyone knows, that this area has been head next to no, maybe one COVID case that was reported in the western region, and there's been a lot of interest in any sort of real estate, whether it's land, old homesteads or, or new builds. There's, there's been a lot. Um, the next one on the docket would be Counselor Daniel Allen. You have the floor.
Thanks, uh, thanks a lot, Greg. I guess my concern is very similar to what you guys are talking about with the assessments and things is, as this snowball of COVID-19 gets rolling downhill and gains momentum or slows down, the effects could be longer down the road. Like, we're looking at a surplus this year, and that's, that's all well and good, but it comes back to something you said earlier about bankruptcies and things like that as we move forward, like, I'm worried about what's going to happen in the next year or two. That's my big fear. I, I gotta be honest. I, I think this looks, you know, this looks good on paper right now, but where we're going to be in another year or two, and it's going to come back to some of that money that, like you were saying about how to spend and, and things like that, I think we really got to be fiscally responsible moving forward as to where we're putting our money in, in things like that.
Agreed, and we do have a healthy reserve position, um, and we're fortunate enough to have these types of surpluses, so we can build our reserves. So that when we do get, you know, these catastrophic or unplanned events or pandemics, we're in a good financial position to respond to those. But we have to continue with that, you know, that prudent path.
Yeah.
Keep salting away those reserves and being very careful about our investment choices, because you're right. I mean, we don't all, you're right.
Yeah.
It's an uncertain world going forward, even in the best of times.
Well, and I agree with you 100%. Um, I do have one sticky little question. Fire protection.
Yes.
Did we ever notice any benefit from? But it comes back to something you said earlier about bankruptcies and things like that as we move forward, like, I'm worried about what's going to happen in the next year or two. That's my big fear. I, I got to be honest. I, I think this looks, you know, this looks good on paper right now, but where we're going to be in another year or two and it's going to come back to some of that money that, like you were saying about how to spend and, and things like that, I think we really got to be fiscally responsible moving forward as to where we're putting our money in and things like that.
Agreed. And we do have a healthy reserve position and we're fortunate enough to have these types of surpluses so we can build our reserves. So that when we do get, you know, these catastrophic or unplanned events or pandemics, we're in a good financial position to respond to those. But we have to continue with that, you know, that prudent path.
Yeah.
Keep salting away those reserves and being very careful about our investment choices because you're right. I mean, we don't all, you're right.
Yeah.
It's an uncertain world going forward, even in the best of times.
Well, and I agree with you 100%. I do have one sticky little question. Fire protection.
Yes.
Did we ever notice any benefit from, from, has our fee ever changed or anything from when the dispatch moved? I know that's probably an ugly question to ask, but I'm just curious.
We, we haven't, that's a good question and I, I guess I didn't come with my homework done on that to answer that question. But I think generally speaking, we're seeing some decrease in our annual expenditures for fire protection. There's a year lag in how we pay for a fire. It's based on the previous year's expenses. But I'd have to be more, I'd have to research that a little closer to be more specific. And I also, we don't know, we don't know for certain that any decreases in expenditures are specifically tied to that dispatch issue, the dispatch issue that we expected to see decreases in.
Okay.
So we, there's still more work to be done there as well as more work of talking to the town on the whole issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Warden, you have the floor.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Shea. It was, it was excellent. Just interest on long-term debt. I'm just wondering, we've got a year-to-date of 108 and we've got a budget of 137 and a, projected of 108. What, what changed generally that long-term debt, the interest rates should be set and so forth? So what, why is the difference between, just for my own?
The main difference there is that we projected to debenture for our investment in 62 Ercrome, which we did not do. So we've not incurred any interest on that debenture. We funded it so far from our capital reserve fund.
Okay.
And so when we did the budget, we, we, we projected a debenture and some interest associated with that, which didn't materialize.
Okay, thanks. That explains.
All right. I have no questions. I don't see anyone's microphones flashing. We'll move on through the agenda.
Agreed.
Item 7.1, I don't think you're going to go yet, Greg.
Oh, okay.
There might be questions for you for the, for the next two in regards to safe restart and transfer to reserves or maybe questions from counsel before you run off. So you're going to get to bore us, as you've stated, the wonderful opportunity to bore us with your president a little bit more.
I did not bore you.
All right, we'll move on to items under new business, item 7.1, Safe Restart Community Grant Fund. You all have that in your package. Deputy Warden?
I'll move that the municipality of Yarmouth forward to, to regular counsel for approval. The CEO's recommendation that we approve the allocation of $50,000 from the 592,768 Safe Restart Fund for the COVID-19 Nonprofit Relief Fund. Program guidelines to be approved is presented in Appendix A. Application is due by April 15, 2021.
All right, a motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen, who's the first one I've seen. Is there any discussion on that motion at all? Hearing none, I guess I'd entertain a question.
Question.
Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. You're off the hook for that one, Greg. Item 7.2, Transfer to Reserves Request for Decision. Madam CEO or Greg?
Maybe both. Maybe me and some support, supporting actor position from the Director of Finance. So as Greg presented to you, the municipality has fared quite well amid the global pandemic and we're in a fairly, fairly healthy financial position. There are still some unknowns. Even past March 31st, we do work on the finance side of things and so it will be, you know, April, May, June before we finally land on what that annual surplus number is. However, if, the municipality is graded, I'll say annually, by the province of Nova Scotia on our financial, financial conditions indicators. And we do very well on all of the indicators except for one. And Greg and I have had several conversations with our counterparts at the province on the way that metric is presented from time to time and it's around the budget accuracy piece. So what the province of Nova Scotia would like to see is that no more than two years out of five, a municipality will be within 5% plus or minus of their anticipated operating budget. And so in the request for decision, I kind of provide the background around the financial condition, budget accuracy, how it's calculated. I talk a little bit about how MODI is fiscally conservative. So we tend to, we tend to plan for worst-case expenditure scenarios and we tend to plan for the least best-case scenario on revenue. So when you put the two together, that's how we end up with, with the type of operating surpluses that you saw today in the, in the summary Greg gave. This year, there's a little bit of an anomaly. So we know for sure that our deed transfer tax performed much better than budgeted. And so there's 230,000 odd extra revenue dollars from deed transfer tax. However, having said that, there could be unknown expenditures toward the end of the year and when we close off the year. And so I have a recommendation before you that we take 60% of the deed transfer tax and we have a motion of council prior to year-end to transfer that to operating reserves. And what that will do is that will bring us closer to that 5% margin in terms of surplus or deficit on the operating budget.
Deputy Ward?
All right, I'll, I'll move that the municipality district of Yarmouth recommend to regularly official council meeting that we transfer 138,000 to operating reserves in addition to the planned transfer to the reserve. And again, the rationale, the, the CEO just went through the rationale for, for that motion.
All right, Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any? My apologies. Motion on the floor by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. My apologies, I did not turn on my microphone. People might have seen my lips moving, but I was talking. Item 7.3, Regional Remo 2021, 2022 Budget for Approval. You all have that in your package? Thank you very much, Greg. What is the wishes of council? There's one thing that I might state before I open up the floor to the Deputy Warden. In, in here is the proposed budget that we were given at the Remo meeting. I must say that it was a little late. It was given to us 45 minutes before the board meeting started and it didn't give me a whole lot of time to go through, obviously, the numbers. There is a couple, there is at least one question on there in regards to stipends. That's up 8% over last year, once you figured out the numbers. Pardon me? Oh, and I was, actually just heard from the CEO, was curious about the reason why that was up. I didn't have the chance to digest it properly, in my opinion, but I, I know the CEO has an answer to that, so I just been notified. So Madam CEO?
So the cost of living index this year is 0.3% and you'll note that the stipend increases more than that. And it's a combination of the cost of living increment, but we're also finding that the time requirement for our two paid staff people for regional emergency management is more than what we originally anticipated. So we will be compensating them for more hours per week plus the cost of living.
Thank you very much for that. Good concise question or answer on that, on that question that I had, even without even knowing that I was going to ask it. Deputy Warden, you have the floor.
I'd all move that the municipality district of Yarmouth recommend for approval to regularly official council. The Remo, the Regional Emergency Measures Organization budget is circulated and our share would be 31,062 and 78 cents.
All right, motion on the floor by Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. He had his finger up first. Is there any discussion on that? Counselor Daniel Allen?
Just a quick question on the, what is a Remo COVID stipend? I see $12,000 Remo COVID stipend. So there's going to be an increase in the stipend, but what, what was that for?
So at the February council meeting, we agreed to provide our share of a, a bonus related to the work that our emergency management coordinator and assistant coordinator did to help us when the pandemic was declared in the spring. We had several executive meetings for regional emergency management and Jeanine and Max both worked with the province. In some cases, they put in 50 or more hours a week and their allotment last fiscal year was only 20 hours a week. So the executive entertained a notion to provide a bonus for Max and Jeanine specifically tied to the work they did to support COVID.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Item 7.4, Ownership of Prospect, Prospect Street. Deputy Warden?
Yes, so during the last several election campaigns, so it's been going on quite a long time and, and for good reason, residents have drawn my attention and others' attentions to the state of repair Prospect Street. And I, I'm not exactly certain of the ownership issues, those types of things. To the best of my knowledge, the, the ownership is, although this may not be accurate, so I'll put that proviso out there. The ownership is sort of half-town, half-TIR and so, so I mean, we, and we may be asked to, to partner, I, I, I'm not certain. But there is certainly, I think, the urgency out there to, to get the, the road in a better state of repair. I mean, it's been torn up and, you know, for, for water sewer repairs over and over and over again. It's just, and it's just, you know, basically fully depreciated and very, very bumpy and so forth. And it's a well-traveled road for both town and municipal residents. So just ask, let's be put on the agenda and to have our CEO look into the ownership and the other issues of this. I guess it's a G, this is a G-class road and so, so that she can come back to council and talk to the other levels of government and our town partner as well, provincial folks to, to try to move the file forward and, and, and get the road, you know, surfaced appropriately.
So my question, so my question to you, Deputy Warden. So we have no idea who owns what section of that road and is, is that what you're after?
Well, I, I, I'm after just sort of a, I guess, approval, tacit approval of, of council to have the CEO look into the issue.
Yeah.
Further and work with the other, other level of government, the province and the town to, to, you know, fact find and ultimately bring it back to council with additional information. And if there's action required on our behalf, we, we could consider that at the time. But again, it's to, to dig deeper into the issue, to, to, to see where we sit and to, to advocate for the, to move forward on the resurfacing.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So you have that direction, Madam CEO? Item number eight, old business, there's none that I see there unless counsel can think of some. Counselor Lauren Cushing, I'm not sure. Did you want to speak on something?
Well, I was going to talk about that Prospect Street ownership.
All right, we can easily go back. My apologies because I missed you. So you, you have the floor if you wish.
Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Some points that I wanted to reinforce what Counselor Trevor Cunningham was saying or Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham was saying. That road is extremely rough, number one. And number two, the north side of that road is in the municipality and the south side of that road is in the town of Yarmouth. Number three, there's a school there. There's a school there, a lot of school buses, a lot of traffic taking kids, picking up kids and whatnot. And to me, because of the condition of the road and it's only getting worse, it could be some type of safety issues there that, that we should probably consider too when we're looking into the ownership and whatnot of it, right? So, so it's, it's a pretty important factors along the go with that road. So that's all, I just wanted to make my comments on that. Thank you.
All right, my apologies. I missed you. I didn't see you in the queue and I didn't see your microphone flashing. Okay, item number nine for action, 9.1.1, in regards to a letter that we received in regards to the Georges Bank moratorium. You all have that in your package? What is the wishes of council? What the letter is basically asking for is for an extension on the moratorium on, on drilling. And this is from the Clean Action Committee out of Clark's Harbor. You all have that letter in front of you. What they're asking for is an email letter to go to the, whether council supports this. We haven't discussed it, that a letter go to the President of the Nova Scotia Federation Municipality, Emily Lutes. And also to, scroll down here a little bit, the letter go out to the Honorable Chuck Porter, Minister of Nova Scotia Energies in Moines. Deputy Warden?
And, and, and there is a huge concern, I know, among many people in the area about Georges Bank, you know, hotter carbon development, for lack of a better word, I guess, in oil and gas on Georges Bank. And it is a very, very important and certainly I'm sure it's an ecologically sensitive area. Having said that, the, the, it's pretty prescriptive as to what they, they want us to do, which is okay. But having said that, in the past around, issues around environment and all these types of things, including the, the, the water quality issues in, in our lakes and rivers and streams and that type of thing from a number of years ago, this is more of a federal and provincial issue. They're the regulators, we're not the regulators. And again, we, we have had, I guess, the current, the councils who have been here for a number of years have had the benefit of, of hearing from folks on both sides of this issue. So I mean, it, it, it may be, and I'm just putting this out here, it, it may be that we alert, you know, the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities as well as the Department Environment, Chuck Porter, to people's concerns around this. But again, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to hear, I certainly want to hear from, from other councils before we make a, a decision on this. I'm, I'm, I'm not just certain, I've got to think about it a little bit more and maybe we should ask for presentations from, from both the fishery sector and the, and community sectors and other sec, and other interested parties in, in this potential legislation.
Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. All right, and again, I agree with Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham that it's a, it is a federal issue and whatnot, but because of the importance of the fishery industry in our area of southwest Nova Scotia, I certainly represent two, two large fishing ports in, in my district and I think it's important that we continue on supporting our fishing industry in, in, in any which way we can. And so, and I, and I agree that we should be able to hear from both sides of the, of the, of the arguments on this moratorium. But, you know, I, I think we should follow suit and, and support the moratorium to 2022 anyway. So that's my, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
So any other comments or questions? So what I've heard is, is Deputy Warden? I think that's who's up. No, Counselor Daniel Allen, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm just going to echo the sentiments that Counselor Cushing just said. Georges Bank is probably one of the most lucrative, lucrative and richest habitats for, for fishing grounds, however you want to. for, for fishing grounds, however you want to put it. Well, it says it right here, in North America, and I would agree with that. Only my opinion, obviously. But I think the gist of this is that in 2022, they're going to look at this again. I think we have time to hear from our fishing sector on their thoughts on this before actually writing a letter. I, I'd like to hear, maybe invite someone, I'm not sure who, one of the fishing groups in to, to speak of this. I'm sure this is on their radar as well. Maybe worth hearing that side, and maybe even the oil sector. I know we've had presentations before, or I've been to presentations, I don't know if they came right to here, but from the oil sector, but I know it's a huge risk, even with today's technology, and I for one am, I, I for one was one of the people that was no rigs on Georges the first time, and I will be no rigs on Georges this time.
Deputy Warden, you now have the floor.
Yeah, I think Counselor Allen brings up a good point, and, and I'm kind of, I'm, I'm sort of the same opinion as him. It's, it's a tremendously risky thing to have oil and gas on, on Georges. Having said that, I do agree with him that council should do their due diligence and invite folks from, you know, both, both sides of the, if there is another side of the argument, I'm not, not certain where they are. But for updates, it, it may be that oil and gas is not, you know, on the radar to be developed on Georges. I'm not, I'm not certain over the next number of years, so supporting it may be an easier thing than we, than we think. So I, I, I'm generally supportive of, of our support of, of it, but I think we should, to Counselor Allen's point, I think we should do a due diligence and hear from, you know, both proponents of, of sort of both ways forward, if, if, if there are both two ways forward, I'm not certain, so.
Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can still picture all those bumper stickers driving around town. My, my grandfather had one. And hearing what our new premier said yesterday, yesterday, his, his platform towards greener energy and the environment, I don't think there's been enough change for me to, to want to see that sort of exploration on Georges Bank. And I'm still fully supportive of the moratorium and willing to make that recommendation sooner than later, so I'm more than willing to listen as well, but for me, that hasn't changed. Thank you.
So I guess what I've heard here so far is, you don't, you, you're looking for more information, is what you're looking for, from both sides of the issue. So we'll, we'll reach out to different organizations. I do know, I think there's another one other than the Clean Ocean Action Committee. There, there's a lot of different lobbying groups, and I think it's important that we get the information from both sides. The argument can be made, and don't get me wrong here, the argument can be made that sometimes that some of these structures can aid in, in the fish habitat. That's been, that's been noted down in the, there's another bad word, the Gulf of Mexico, where they did have a disaster happen down there. But there's also some fish species that actually was helped by, by some of the infrastructure that was built. But that's here nor there, but we need more information, so that's where we're going. Item 9.1.2, Nova Scotia Firefighters Benevolent Fund. If there's a funding request in there, what is the wishes of council?
Counselor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would this be an appropriate use of our grant monies that will be coming available and possibly asking staff to follow up with them and pointing them in the direction of that process? Or would this be outside and separate from?
CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you to Counselor Hurlberg, a couple of things. So yes, they could definitely apply for the fund that you've just recommended to council, but we are underspent on your regular community grants program. So I actually had the economic development officer reach out to the group and can hook them up with our application process. So if we get an application in before the end of this fiscal year, then it can come to you, and you can, you can make a decision on it inside this fiscal year. If it doesn't come in until April 1st, it will come to you as part of your annual grants process. So we can definitely help.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I like the idea of helping. I just had a couple of questions, because some of this isn't clear to me, and I get to be a stick in the mud here for a minute. But when they're looking for money for traveling expenses and things like that for appointments, it's not clear to me if it's, has to do with what, anything that's happening on their job or just personally, because we have a lot of first responders in different aspects of this that, that also aren't coming to us to help with their travel expenses. So I guess that's what I'm wondering, like, you know, I, I'm glad to help, especially if someone gets hurt while they're, while they're putting out a fire or doing their, you know, doing their volunteer. But I want to make sure it's going to the right, to the right people for the right reasons. I, I guess, I'm, I'm not trying to be, you know, I'm not trying to say, but there are a lot of people in need just through cancer, or whether it be, you know, nurses, whether it be ambulance drivers, police, that have personal appointments to go places that we do not fund. And, you know, but if it comes down to something, because I know volun, firefighting is mostly volunteer, and if it has something to do with, with what happens to them on the job, I'm fully in support of. I just, I want to make sure that's clear to me.
Absolutely. There's also another thing too that I'd like to point out. I, as, as a volunteer at a fire department, I also know that the Nova Scotia Firefighters' Benevolent Fund also makes requests of separate fire departments, so I'm, what I'm afraid of is getting the double dip. I, I want to make, I want to talk to our, our fire chief just to make sure that I'm, and other fire departments around the municipality, just to make sure that this is not a double dip, because it'd be asking not only a volunteer group through our volunteer fire departments to, to pay some of the, the fire tax rate that they put forward to, to fund the departments, but also it'd be like a double dip. And that's what I'd be afraid of, because I don't want to do the same thing that other community groups are doing.
And I have something else to add to, Mr. Chair.
Pardon me?
Can I ask you?
Yep.
So, and the other piece for council to remember too is, this fiscal year is the first year that the municipality has paid the workers' compensation premium for our volunteer firefighters. So the, so those volunteers are required to have workers' compensation coverage in the line of duty in, in fire suppression and first responders. And we are funding that through our general rate. It's not part of the fire rate, because it's the same for, for all departments, so it's not part of their fire rate calculation. So we're funding that as well. So if they get injured in the line of duty fighting a fire, the benevolent fund, in my view, would only fill gaps that the workers' comp benefit wouldn't fill. So there are more questions to come, and having them go through the normal grant process is where our economic development officer works to get all those answers, so that council can have as much information as possible when they deliberate.
That's right. I forgot about that. I had asked you that question, what's, what's this new payment to the workers' compensation fund for? A check that I, that I signed here just within the last month. I did ask the CAO about that, and I did forget about that. So thank you very much for that. So anyway, they've been notified to, to go through the normal grants process, and we'll wait to see if it comes through budgetary. Item 9.2, for your information, you have letters there from the PVSC, correspondence from Douglas Fevens, correspondence from Morgan and Miro, tipping fees in regards to the region of Queens, and an important note from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipality. It's for your information. Like I said, every time I look with the sun out, you're, it looks like I have one of the blind's. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to speak to 9.2.2 correspondence from Mr. Fevens. I do feel it's important to, for the municipality to include and recognize marginalized groups in a public way, and I would like to ask that council add to the next committee of the whole discussion on revisiting the flag policy. And maybe as a short-term solution, recommend that staff use our social media accounts to recognize National, I need to make sure I get this title right, National Transgender Day of Visibility on March the 31st of this year, and would look forward to future discussions on how we can be recognizing groups and marginalized people in our community.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none. We do have in-camera recommendations, but we're going to end this regular committee of the whole meeting, and we're going to call a special regular council meeting. So if there's no more agenda items, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Moved by Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. All right, council, are you ready to go into a regular council meeting with recommendations from in-camera?
You need a motion to waive the 72-hour.
I'll call a meeting to order, then we'll, we'll go ahead. For that, I'll ask for it. All right. I'd like to call a, a regular special council meeting to order. We have in-camera recommendations that we need to continue. However, in our, our policy, we need a motion to waive the 72-hour public notice, so is someone, someone prepared to make that a motion?
For now?
Yeah, now.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the 72-hour notice.
All right, a motion on the floor by Counselor Daniel Allen, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Motion on the floor to waive the 72-hour meeting notice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. All right, council, I believe we had three recommendations that came from an in-camera session that we had earlier. So is someone being, someone prepared to make any motions? Excuse me. Counselor Daniel Allen, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that in regards to subdivision file 9865, council accept 5% cash in lieu of parkland dedication.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Any discussion on that motion? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We also have another motion.
I have another motion. I'd like to make a motion in regards to subdivision file 9867, that council accept 5% cash in lieu of parkland dedication.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously.
And I have one other motion. I would like to make a motion in regards to subdivision file 9868, that council accept 5% cash in lieu of parkland dedication.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlberg. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, council. That was the only three things that we needed to ratify in a regular council meeting, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Hurlberg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. You all have a good afternoon.